Okay, call this regular council meeting of January 25th, 2020 to order. Clerk call to roll.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes.
She has an excuse absence.
Okay. Lee?
Here.
Metz?
Here.
Osmanoglu?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have a prayer by Jeff Halter.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask that you would give us wisdom and the grace to follow through in the wisdom you give us to best serve this community. We just thank you for our residents. We just pray for help to do your will. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got the minutes of the February 11th work session? And unless somebody's got any changes to make?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see any mistakes or any changes at all, so I moved to adopt them.
Okay, minutes are approved. We have a public presentation right now to take place. Award presentation to Police Officer Zachary Clark. Handle that, Chief.
Yes, would you like to join me, Mayor?
Well, sure.
Let's go.
Okay. Sorry, I'm being scanned at meetings all day.
You know, firefighters are called upon to save lives all the time, and in our increasingly complex world, it seems that police officers are called upon that task as well. Zach Clark responded in just such a situation on the 20th of December to our B section. While he was in the room, he was getting some information, and when he arrived, he found one of our residents that was unresponsive. He checked for a pulse. He was a firefighter before he was a police officer over here at our volunteer fire department. He found that it was very faint, and he administered some life-saving drugs, and the resident became alert and without question Zach saved her life. So in recognition of that, Zach, I'm very proud to present you with the Preservation of Life Award. And it reads that it's awarded to Police Officers Zachary and Clark for taking action that directly results in the saving of another person's life on December 19, 2019, and acting in accordance with the highest ideals of professional service. Your actions reflected outstanding police worth, displaying initiative, capability, and attention to duty that earned the respect and admiration of your colleagues and the citizens of our community. This is awarded on the 25th day of February in the year 2020, and is signed by the Mayor of Green Hills, David Moore, Ivana Kovak, our Municipal Manager, and Ivy. So this time, I'm going to ask Mayor Moore to present the people this award. I'm sorry. Thank you. Congratulations. By the way, I'd like to mention that Zach learned all of his law enforcement skills from his father. So how many years has I had in law enforcement, he's a fire from Hamilton County Sheriff's Office.
Great. Okay. All right, very good. Thanks, Zach, and family. Okay, this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. It's not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all their time to other speakers. Anybody? You want to say something?
Do I need to sign in? The crowd outside. No, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Chris Bonzell. I've served on Cincinnati City Council, actually with your city manager when she was down working for the city of Cincinnati. So you guys got a winner here, so congratulations, you've done a tremendous job for Green Hills. I've also served as Hamilton County Commissioner, and now I'm a candidate for the State Representative for House District 28, which Green Hills is in part of that district. So for me, you know, I just want to introduce myself and I look forward to working with you on the issues that are facing our community up in Columbus, from public education, which I know a lot of people are concerned about, to the local government fund, which is another issue that's affected local governments, and then also public safety, to make sure that our communities are safe and taken care of from 911 to the resources that they need to do their job. And congratulations, Chief, for the great work that your officer did, and that just is a testimony to how important it is to our communities to have great public safety. I have deep roots in this district. I grew up here, I raised my family here, I've worked here. I've spent many a time coaching baseball teams on the Green Hills ballfields just out back there. I've lost a few games here, but they're always been competitive. But you have a wonderful community. Now, I had an opportunity just this past week, I was going door to door down in the J section, and just a tremendous amount of beauty within your community, as well as just the citizens, and just how involved they are. So you are very, very lucky and blessed, because communities where citizens care really make the difference, and you can really tell. And I see that here in Green Hills. For me, I'm trying to bring some common sense solutions to our problems. That's what I think we're missing a lot today in our world, is just how we solve these issues in a common sense way, and that's what I'll try to bring. I'm an engineer by training, and so I try to use data and look at, you know, just the right metrics to figure out how we want to solve our problems. I look forward to working with you on those when I get to Columbus in the next eight months. So we've got a little ways to go, but I just appreciate the time, again, for introducing myself, and look forward to talking with you and meeting with you over the next few months until November. So thanks again, and God bless.
Thank you.
And I'll probably stay around just to listen to some of this.
Mechanical engineer, or?
Actually, I'm an aerospace engineer, so yeah. My dad was a mechanical engineer, he was trying to get me to be a mechanical engineer, and I just ended up more interested in planes and rockets and jets.
It's all good.
Yeah, it is. It's all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Municipal Manager reports to village officials. You're up next.
I was enjoying listening to everybody else. Okay, thank you. Okay, couple reminders, Taxpayer Assistance Day, if you hear of any of our citizens who are wanting some assistance with their local taxes. We are going to have it, they've been holding them in mail healthy, and they're doing the same thing again this year. I have it on the website, and the address is here if you need to get that to anyone. Also, our electric sign, our electronic sign is going up. They actually poured the pad last week, it pulls in place, so keep that moving along, it's pretty exciting. We have the Wenton Road change order on the agenda tonight for the median strip. We have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, so we're very excited to get this up and get it going. So I'll let you know, we'll probably come away with at least a tentative start date after the pre-con tomorrow.
Do you have a general idea how long it will take?
Oh, you know what, it's probably in the specs, and I don't recall what it is. Remember, we do have waterworks now, so I think that could be nine months to 12 months. It could be a while.
There's going to be preference, the waterworks.
They'll go first. Hopefully, it won't take that long, hopefully we'll have it done before
No, that's good, just curious.
Bad weather or fall, but you never know when that one's a little out of our control. But we'll keep it moving, okay? Our home construction, we're moving forward with that. At this point in time, we do have a planning commission meeting scheduled for March 12th, so also at that planning commission meeting, we will be discussing some zoning code amendments that I've been working with Jeff Forbes on, and they're really good, tight ones. I'm very excited, can't wait to have these in place because we really need them. So I'll be reviewing those for the first time with planning commission on that date too, and then from there, they should set up their public hearing and eventually get that information to council. This afternoon, this evening, we had our first meeting with the Gambier and Ingram residents for the new park, and they were very excited and gave us their input on the new park, so that went really well. Always fun to see them, so that's what I have for now.
Comments or questions? Law Director Jeff Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'm happy to report that we have no pending legal matters. You'll be happy to hear me report that. And then, as far as any, you know, state legislation that's of municipal interest, I guess I should be careful, because this is usually when I slam the state legislature. With respect to bills that are generally interfering with our local government authority. I did mention a couple, and I'm not sure if the report went out, there's House Bill 425 related to concealed weapons. Actually, Chief is the one who probably care more about that. This would make some changes to the concealed weapon law that would modify the, right now, I guess, and Chief can explain it better than I can, if you have a concealed carry permit and you have something, if you get pulled over for a speeding ticket or for some other, you know, offense, there are some requirements that you have to let the law enforcement officer know that you, well, there's these changes, I think, would modify that. And I haven't heard from law enforcement yet, but I suspect anything that would modify that, that would make them feel less safe, we probably aren't very happy about. The only other one I added on there, and it's House Bill 476, has to do with eminent domain, it really won't have any impact necessarily here. I added it because, and actually, yeah, I added it because this is a great example of, we talked about this once some time ago, there was an eminent domain bill that was introduced that was going to change the state law to preempt the use of eminent domain for certain recreational trail projects. It was clearly introduced, that bill, to change the whole law because of one very specific project, I think it was around Cleveland or in Cuyahoga County. Rather than letting the local jurisdictions resolve it the way the current law called for, their solution was, let's change the entire eminent domain law to address that one issue. House Bill 476 is sort of a good step, sort of, in a certain sense, because it's a new bill meant to address that old bill, that basically says if a county, or a state, or some higher jurisdiction is trying to use eminent domain for recreational trails, so again, this only has to do with that one project. It would create a new provision in the law that would allow the local jurisdiction, the municipality or the township, to veto the project, which is a new concept. In this, under this bill, we're not talking about if the municipality is the appropriating agency, it's if some other agency is trying to do it in the village, you'd be able to veto that project. I mention it because it's a nice step toward increased local authority. That being said, it's kind of a weird provision, because it would give the local authority a veto right over a project that they really have nothing to do with. Again, I only mention it because it's legislative action that would change the law that could potentially impact you as a municipality.
Has eminent domain, it's been like full spectrum. In the beginning, they had very sound reasons to do what they were doing, and then it seemed like there was an abuse of it, and to see, you know, so it's trying to find some, hopefully, ethical ground to...
You're sort of, I'm kind of biased on that, in that some of you know, some of you don't know. You're probably talking about the Norwood case, which was...
That was one of them.
Well, my law firm represented the property owners in that case, so we actually were involved in that case all the way up to the Ohio Supreme Court. What I would tell you is, since that case, the state legislature did make some changes, and actually good ones, to really solidify how eminent domain and appropriating property for public uses, how it should operate, and it's been fine for 10, going on 15 years now, and then this is happening. But again, I guess the other important thing to note is, none of it has passed. They're just bills that are floating around, kicking around up there. So we'll see if any of them get traction to actually go forward.
I do appreciate you bringing up other things that aren't affecting us directly, because I think it paints a picture and gives us more context around our decisions, so I appreciate that.
And with that, that would conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Clerk of Council Vanessa Roberts?
No report.
Okay. Chief of Police Neil Fertleman?
Thanks, Mayor. I sent out lots of reading today. You not only got a monthly report, but you also have our annual report, the quiz sometime tomorrow. As mentioned in those reports, we do appreciate all the support that you gave us. It was a good and interesting year, we got a lot of things done, we look forward to accomplishing many more things this year. One of the things that made me smile was that there was a picture in our monthly report of Lieutenant Ward holding up the state certification, which of course, as you know, we've been Kalia accredited since 2007, but the state has initiated their own certification program, I think particularly for agencies that aren't in the process, the accreditation process, but we decided to enter that process as well. So we're fully accredited by the state in addition to Kalia. But our latest accomplishment was certification in community engagement, and I thought that was particularly apt for our community, because that's certainly what we're all about. I think I wrote in our annual report that we could probably be the model for community-oriented policing, and it's something that our officers enjoy, I think our citizens enjoy the interaction, and we just couldn't do it without your support, and particularly the support of our citizens who always show up for events and even ask for more events. So that's an award that we're particularly proud to receive from the state. We also were certified from them for our compliance in the area of bias-based policing, investigation of employee conduct, use of force, and recruiting and hiring. And thanks to our police levy that passed the year before last late, we really haven't had to do much hiring, because things are pretty stable now, so we thank you again for that. We did just recently receive word that our two new radios that we ordered are in our police portable radios. We were able to, through some work with Mobilecom, to get a grant to get those at an even reduced rate. Normally, I wait to buy them, believe this or not, Motorola holds a once-a-year 40% off sale, it's kind of like Macy's, but you know, I wait for it. We were able to get an even better price. We got these virtually at a little below half price, so we did acquire two new radios. I was the only active officer that still has an old one, so I get a new radio, and then we're going to have another new radio that we'll be using soon. The thing that we're probably the most excited about on March 10th, in collaboration with the Wenton Woods City Schools and the Forest Park Police Department, we'll be starting our teen academy. That actually starts on Tuesday, March 10th, and it will run until April 21st. We will meet with a group of 10th and 11th grade students. We're really targeting two types of students. The first is a concern, those youth that we have interacted with that are starting to go off the tracks and maybe going down the wrong path, we want to get them back and maybe get some role models in their lives, maybe they aren't getting that at home. We'd like to get them going down the path to where they become doctors, lawyers, teachers, policemen, firemen, something productive in our society, and unfortunately, right now, the only time they see cops are, you know, when we're asking them what they're doing in a closed park, or why they're congregating here, so we want to give them the full story. We do lots of neat things in the academy, like pursuit driving, shooting simulations. Councilman Walther Willard can tell you all about that, she's been through the adult academy program, but they're going to go see the comm center and the sheriff's helicopter and some of those things. So we really want this first encounter to be a success, because we're going to start small, but we really need the students to help us sell it to the next group. So something we're really looking forward to, and we think that this could really make a difference in a couple of young people's lives, so we'll go from there. During the month of January, we investigated three accidents, three crimes, 402 other incidents. We had 677 contacts with citizens, 283 of those were dispatched, and 394 of those were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 103 instances. We assisted other agencies 53 times, and made 22 criminal arrests and 69 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments and questions with the Chief?
I have a couple of comments and questions as well. One comment is, for the community engagement, I always have been very proud of the work that you do, because you always put on the report how many of the calls have been actually calls for help, or has been for any particular reason, but X amount of calls that was to engage community with the officers, and that has always been a bright star for me. Second comment that I wanted to make is, whenever we have to round up the troops for Kalia, let's just say, you can always count on me to make any comments, to write anything that you need for me to contribute to for that time. And I also would like to know if you're planning on when the self-defense course, I know that is for everybody, but I think it's particularly important for women, whenever you're going to have that again, and how many radios do you need after the later two that you just acquired? How many more radios do you need?
When I got here, we did not have enough radios to issue to each officer.
I know.
It's my belief that if you do that, they last forever, because the officer will take care of individual equipment rather than one that just gets thrown in the rack. We have used, and I'm always cheerful about using this, we have used money confiscated from drug offenders
I know.
for this program over the past, I think, four or five years with manager's permission. This gives us right where we need to be. We also even have a bank of a half dozen of the older radios. They're still functional, and they still work, it's just that Motorola has planned obsolescence that they won't replace the parts anymore. So once they stop working, they won't be a benefit to us, but this will give everyone their own radio and a bank of a half a dozen spares, and Kalia comes in December.
Okay, and at what time is the meeting with the youth police academy?
That will run between 3:30 and 5:30, it will be held at the senior center in Forest Park.
And do you need any help, or do you need any pizzas?
We'll keep you posted.
Okay.
That is one of the things that we plan to do.
I know.
Kids like to eat, so that will, we'll serve food at the end of every session.
You know where to find me.
Yeah, and the answer to your other question is, the self-defense course, we have about a half a dozen people signed up. Officer Clark is actually the instructor for that course, and he is contacting those that have signed up to get a date that is mutually agreeable with them. Once we get that, we'll publicize it, so that hopefully we'll get another half a dozen.
That would be great. I did it once when you offered it first, and I don't mind doing it again as a refresher, and I would like to participate in that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have court receipts for the month of January 2020. State of Ohio received $1,769.50, Hamilton County $61.50, and the Village of Green Hills And that's all I have. Committee reports, recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is that the Harvest Fest application is up and good, so if anybody has a booth or something that they want to sign up for, for that, go ahead and go fill that out, and that's my report.
Are there dates available yet for days at the pool, or anything like that?
I believe they went out in the journal, didn't they?
The one, Member Appreciation Day, the last one, end of August, is on there.
Yeah, but not the...
Any others?
Not the early one.
Before I will have a complete calendar.
All right, thank you.
Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Mary Walther?
We have not had a meeting yet because it was a lack of agenda, and we have planned for the meeting on the 28th of April, laws and rules at 6:00 PM, and safety at 5:30.
Service Streets Jennifer Osmanoglu?
We didn't do much last week, so we have legislation to pass about the stormwater regulations and the median today, so that's what we'll be talking about. That's all I have.
Okay, Community Development Jeff Halter?
Just a couple things, excited to see the sign going up soon in front of the shopping center. It's an opportunity for those in the shopping center to advertise, there's some solid space that they can rent, but we'll also have the interchangeable piece in place. Looking forward to having some guidelines on how we use that, so it matches well functionally and aesthetically to our community. And the base, I guess, is going to be coming up as soon as it dries out a little bit on the entryway sign, so we're looking forward to having that happen, and that concludes my report.
All right, does anybody have anything for safety, for building?
No, the announcement of the meeting, the same day as their laws and rules, at this time.
Finance and Audit Jack Lee?
I think, Mr. Mayor, as we mentioned at the work session, we did have a meeting on the 11th of this month with the finance director and manager. The year-end figures have been submitted to the state as required. We'll get into the nitty-gritty details of those at retreat when we can have appropriate time to review those, as well as the proposed capital expenditures schedule coming up. At your place tonight, I did the general fund recap for the month of January. As you can see, we continue the positive trend in income tax receipts month-to-month and year-to-year to date, which are very positive, as well as the overall fund balance difference being very positive in that regard. Expenditures are anticipated as, or indicated as anticipated, and really no surprises there. Unless you have any questions, that's the end of my report.
No questions? We have no unfinished business? We have new business. Resolution number 2020-RO5-SNS, resolution adopting amended Articles 1, 3, and 5 rules of the Regulations for the Hamilton County Stormwater District. You ready?
Are you ready?
Let me know if you need to tag.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2020-RO5-SNS, a resolution adopting amended Articles 1, 3, and 5 rules and regulations for the Hamilton County Stormwater District. Whereas pursuant to the Stormwater Phase II Permit Program, or the Phase II Program of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, of the Federal Water Pollution Control Act, is amended 33 U.S.C. 1251 at SEC 40 CFR Parts 122.30 through 122.37. The Ohio Water Pollution Control Act, Ohio Revised Code Chapter 6111, and Ohio Administrative Code Chapter 3745-39, referred to as Phase II Stormwater Rules for Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, or MS4. Dischargers of storm water from small MS4s must obtain a NPDES permit from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, and whereas the Phase II Program as administered by US EPA and the Ohio EPA requires designated communities, including the County of Hamilton, or the county, and various local independent jurisdictions which own and/or operate an MS4, to develop a stormwater management program under the Phase II Permit to address the quality of stormwater runoff within their jurisdictions, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, or the board, has created the Hamilton County Stormwater District, or HCSWD, under Chapter 6117 of the Ohio Revised Code to address the requirements of the Phase II Program in the unincorporated regions of Hamilton County, or county, and within those incorporated municipal corporations within the county which have consented to the formation of the HCSWD and consented to its operation within their corporate limits or member municipalities. to its operation within their corporate limits, or member municipalities, or members, or co-permittees. And whereas the attached amended rules and regulations, which have been adopted by the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners on September 12th, 2019, in order to carry out the responsibilities of MS4s under the Phase II Permit Program, are intended to apply to non-stormwater discharges, stormwater discharges generated by construction and/or earth disturbing activities, and post-construction stormwater discharges from development and previously developed sites within the unincorporated regions of the county, and within municipal corporations which are co-permittees under the MS4 Permit. And whereas the council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, or council, as a co-permitting municipal corporation under the Phase II Permit, has previously adopted through resolution and is implementing the HCSWD rules and regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens by preventing non-stormwater discharges and controlling stormwater discharges from construction, development, and redevelopment sites. Whereas the above adopted resolution states that these rules and regulations of the HCSWD may be duly amended or modified by the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, from time to time, and that council will adopt said amendments or modifications to these rules and regulations of the HCSWD, unless council enacts alternative rules and regulations that are mutually agreed to be as equally stringent or more stringent than the rules and regulations of the HCSWD. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, Section 1, that the council hereby adopts, establishes, and implements within Green Hills the amended rules and regulations of the Hamilton County Stormwater District, Article 1, Definitions, Article 3, Earthworks Regulations, and Article 5, Post-Construction Stormwater Quality Regulations, or Post-Construction Regulations, as the same are set forth in Exhibit A, which are attached hereto and incorporated into this resolution, ordinance as if fully rewrit, re, bah, sorry, rewritten herein. Section 2, that council and the appropriate administrative officials of Green Hills will cooperate with the HCSWD in the enforcement of these amended rules and regulations, and shall exercise such legal authority as it may possess, which may reasonably require to assist the HCSWD in carrying out the intent of the rules and regulations within the municipal corporate boundaries in order to achieve and maintain compliance with the requirements of state and federal law regarding the Phase II Program. Section 3, that the Green Hills Municipal Manager is hereby authorized and directed to, A, act as the enforcing official for Article 3 Earthwork Regulations, to do all things reasonably necessary and proper to cooperate with the HCSWD in implementing and carrying out the Phase II Program and enforcing Article 3 Earthwork Regulations within the Green Hills corporate boundaries for any common plan of development that disturbs at least one acre or more. Hereby names the Green Hills Board of Zoning Appeals as the body designated to hear appeals under Section 320 of the Earthwork Regulations, and hereby agrees to report such enforcement action to the HCSWD in a format and frequency approved by the HCSWD. And B, act as the enforcing official for Article 5 Post-Construction Regulations, to do all things reasonably necessary and proper to cooperate with the HCSWD in implementing and carrying out the Phase II Program, and enforcing Article 5 Post-Construction Regulations within the corporate boundaries for any common plan of development that disturbs at least one acre or more, require the control of 20% of the water quality volume for previously developed projects. Hereby names the Green Hills Board of Zoning Appeals as the body designated to hear appeals under Section 520 of the Post-Construction Regulations, and hereby agrees to report such enforcement actions to the HCSWD in a format and frequency approved by the HCSWD. Section 4, that is, that it is the intent of the council that the remedies provided in this resolution and in the rules and regulations are intended to be in addition to and not exclusive of any other remedies, as may be available under applicable federal, state, or local law. Section 5, that the provisions of this resolution are hereby declared to be severable. If any provision, clause, sentence, or paragraph of this resolution, or the application thereof to any person, establishment, or circumstances, shall be held invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this resolution. Section 6, that this resolution shall go into effect and become law from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Section 7, that the clerk of the village is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I think she should read Exhibit A.
Well, that's sure.
Before I come back at work again, I do this stuff every day.
Okay, clerk call the roll.
Walter?
Aye.
No, no. Yes or no?
Yes.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Yes, aye.
Walter?
Aye.
He was messing with you.
It's been moved and seconded for, Resolution 2020-R-05-SNS passes. Okay, next resolution, 2020-R-06-SNS, authorizing municipal manager to execute, execute a change order to the agreement previously authorized by council with Welsh Excavation Company for the Winton Road Improvement Project. You're on again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2020-R-06-SNS, authorizing the municipal manager to execute a change order to the agreement previously authorized by council with Welsh Excavation Company for the Winton Road Improvement Project. Whereas the Village of Green Hills has entered into a contract with Welsh Excavation Company for the Winton Road Improvement Project, and whereas the village has intended for there to be a median strip included in the bid specs, and utilizing the unit cost of the recently bid project, a median strip can be added. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to execute a change order in the amount of $205,600 with Welsh Excavation Company for the construction of a median strip. Section 2, that the finance director is authorized to make a payment to Welsh Excavation Company for this change order in the amount of $205,600. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Okay, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Osmanaglu?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Resolution 2020-R-06-SNS passes. Next thing, I need a motion to concur with the reappointment of Melanie Hermes, Nancy Moore, and Galina Radford to the Community Programming Board of Regional Council of Governments. Did I make that such a sort of...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to reappoint Melanie Hermes, Nancy Moore, and Galina Radford to the Community Programming Board of Regional Council of Governments.
Second.
All in favor? We have to do a roll call for that, do we? A motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that passes. And then we have another one, the Community Reinvestment Areas Housing Review Council, a motion to concur with the appointment of Bud Walderman to the Community Reinvestment Housing Review Council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we concur with the appointment of Bud Walderman to the Community Reinvestment Areas Housing Review Council.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. And municipal calendar, we've got...
Safety Committee, 5:30, and laws and rules at 6:00.
Anything else on the calendar?
Retreat, our retreat's like April 18.
Yeah.
Retreat.
And we have a, a planning and commission meeting.
And everybody go out and vote, March the 17th.
Okay. Vergerd.